At this time, we call the order, special call meeting of the Belkirk County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. We're going to move into approving the agenda, and we have one item that needs to be added to our agenda.
We need an action item added at the end, just concerning the Eastern Elementary multipurpose room project with the connection to the fire department that we need to share with you.
Okay, so just put it right down as a new item, because we don't have any action items. Everybody record that? Okay. All in favor of our agenda?
Some will, Mr. Chair.
Give me a motion. Accept it. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. At this time, I might go over and ask Mr. Ismael if he would ask grace on our meal for today.
Let's pray. Lord our God, we praise and thank you for the privilege of gathering together. We thank you for calling us to leadership, and we pray that we might be very conscious of our responsibilities as leaders in this community, that we might faithfully serve you and the public. We ask that you direct all of our deliberations today, and bless this food to strengthen us, that we might continue our service to you in Christ's sweet prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Mike. Now that we have the meeting called order, we're going to take a recess. So, you know, 15 minutes or whatever it takes, certainly not going to hold you to that, but this time we'll just break to have a little bit of lunch, and then we'll come back and start up the presentation. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back into open session at this time, and the next item, we're going to need to go into closed session so we can discuss some issues on some segments.
I move that we go into closed session, as allowed by North Carolina General Statute 132-1.7, to prevent the disclosure of sensitive public security information.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session now, and Don will continue his capital presentation, and I'll be passing some hard copies around, so you'll have something to follow with them.
This will be on the screen, did you see?
He said capital was not on the screen. And the copy that you received in session can go on the front of what you already had. I mean, what you already had can go on the front of what she's handing out.
As he's coming around, you see the first line item, you have the safety and security piece, and we've got that, so that you see the dollar figure that's been drawn down for that. And then I wanted to, we put page numbers on here. There are a couple of things I wanted to point out to you, and you certainly may have some questions beyond what I share with you. The first on page one, as you look at, and again, this is organized in terms of projects, the location, what our estimated cost is. Then we've got what we're proposing for the capital budget for 2016-17, and then we've tried to look at things that we wanted at least be on your radar for the next two to five years, and then a six to 10-year window. And as we do this through the years, there'll be more things added to six to 10-year, I'm sure, as we get through that. But about midway down your page, we have the replacement of two activity buses. We normally have one of those each year to do the replacement in about a 20-year cycle, but we had an accident with one of the buses this year that was totaled, so there's two buses that need to be replaced. But to give you an idea of how old some of the buses are, the insurance money for that total activity bus came in at a grand total of $5,000. Just, we just didn't get very much for it after that was done. So this would be the replacement. And one of the buses that we're looking to replace is a 22-year-old lift bus that stays here at Central Services, and it is used by schools if they're doing either athletic events, it would involve transporting a person who needed the lift, or if they were doing a field trip and they had a student that was non-ambulatory, or had other reasons to have a lift. So that would be one of the buses, and then the replacement of the bus that was damaged. And then system-wide technology is really the biggest line item that you see here, $400,000 for everything that Mark Malek is responsible for in the system. As you move through, if you will, over to page two, down near the bottom, there's a $55,115 item at Northside High School for replacement of cabinets and tables in Labs 1, 2, 3, and 4. And these are four classrooms that are science classrooms, and through the years, if you know what the science tables look like, they have a different type of a countertop, they have sinks and plumbing that's involved. Over the years, the plumbing has rotted the cabinetry and the hardware, and what we want to do is replace the science equipment to have it to where it needs to be, and we're looking at doing that over a multi-year span. So the first request this year would be for $25,000 of that $55,000 to do what we could with that, and then move forward in subsequent years. And then, if you would, over on page four. There's a Southside High School project on repair the track where it's been damaged by erosion. We're doing significant work this year already in the current capital budget of going back over an area of the track that has had quite a bit of erosion. And Terry, I don't remember how many loads of dirt, there were a couple of hundred loads of-
Three hundred.
Three hundred loads of dirt that have been brought in. That's step one of making sure that the erosion problem is fixed, but we've already had damage done to the track. So after we get the erosion problem solved, we want to go back in and take care of taking care of the damage that was on the track caused by the erosion. And then as you scan down, you'll see that the overall total for the 16-17 request is $1.833 million. That leaves us with a total of two to five, with projects that are listed of $3,326,580. That number, I'm sure, will change as we go through the next two or three years, and we continue to add to that and address the issues that come up. And then we also wanted to put just the notion of the modular replacements. In a couple of our campuses, we have modular units that are well past their active life. We have several of those listed. We want to give you the brick and mortar number based on what, if you key in the square footage, DPI has a calculator that comes in and gives you an idea of what the brick and mortar piece would be. Over on page five, we've got the modular replacements with regard to what metal buildings would be, and that's what we've put in in several of the schools recently, or not recently, but in the last six or seven years. The first one, the most dire need we feel like we have is at Washington High School, which will be a replacement of a building right now that has eight classrooms, with a building that has 12 classrooms, just to allow for the extra space that will be needed on that campus. And the modulars obviously come in a little cheaper if they're metal, and we wanted to give you just an idea of what that looked like as we look out from a current to a five-year time period. And then finally, down at the bottom, as you know, we've had some conversation with performance contracts, in fact, Robert's here from Schneider, and we've talked about different things that need to be done, and we've captured those in one way or another on the capital request. These items are things that we, again, want to have on your radar, and as we look at what the pressing needs are, we always want to go after the things that we feel like are going to capture savings and do a quick payback period. But this is still a list of items that we want to continue to have some conversations and discussions about. Timeframes may vary, the boiler replacement at Northside, and some of those types of things can wait. The building envelope issues at Northside, and at Northeast are issues that have come up, year after year, of things that need to be done, so we'll be coming to you with other project ideas that fall into these areas as well. But that's a quick run-through, and wanted to certainly give you an idea, an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have.
I just have one. I'm trying to wrap my mind around 300 loads of dirt. I mean, I'm trying to figure that one out. Is that, was that some flaw when the track was placed there, near, in a ravine, or?
I'm not sure if I would categorize it as a flaw. Maybe Stan could describe, because I'm not sure exactly how it came about.
All the stormwater runs around the property, and they built a track up, and it dropped off at about a 45-degree angle down, probably 15 foot, or maybe 12 foot, to the bottom of the ditch. And over the years, they originally evidently saw it to maintain it, but it washed away during sometime prior to coming here. But what they're doing is cleaning the ditch, straightening it back up, because the ditch had become a snake ditch, and they cleaned it up, straightened it up. We put a cover in, a 24-inch tile with two drop-in, and then covering it back up and grading it to level off the end of the field. So it'd be a much more idle feeling and easier to maintain before they had to push mow that hill, because it was too big of a slope to mow, so it'd be better for all. But they installed the pipe, and they're hauling dirt, as we speak.
What's going to stop the erosion? What have you-
We've leveled it off and done it and graded it, and so we will no longer have that slope. We've made it flat level, and all the water goes to the pipe.
That's only, that is only west end of that field, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, northwards.
Yes, sir, west end of the field.
Did you look at that about two years ago?
Yes, sir. It was an approved project. It's done. That's being done now. It was already funded.
I've got another question. From Washington High School, the place is large, 12 classrooms. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The current building has eight.
Have eight in it now?
That's right.
And DPS, DPS, they require square footage. Is this one of their doors that just increases by four?
Well, we're looking at size in terms of where we're at right now with capacity and the enrollment numbers. We're going to add 155 students on that campus. Some of those students will go to early college and possibly to the regional school in Jamesville, but we're already well beyond capacity at Washington, and that provides four additional classroom spaces.
Why can't some of these students be transferred to other schools that are half empty?
Well, enrollment management, I think, is one of the conversations that we've got to have in terms of what we do. The topic of redistricting, I think, comes up, and there are strong feelings on both sides of that. One of the things that we've tried to do with the two programs that we've put in with the governor's money, at Southside and Northside, was to try to see if there were any students at Washington that were interested in those programs that would choose to go into those program areas to reduce the numbers. But that's certainly an issue that's at the top of the priority piece that we've got to look at.
Well, it's cheaper to redistrict than it is to spend all this money. So what does the board think? You want the capital and keep the districts like they are, or do you want to redistrict and save the taxpayers' money?
Well, actually, it's a conversation that's worth having. I don't doubt that. But it's a lot more complicated than simply drawing a line and saying that, you know, we can, and I know you're not saying that, and sending high school students to another school, because it involves, it would also involve the middle school, all the kids that would fall in that area. So it would then bring into play probably, well, let's just say if we were looking from Washington, I guess east is what I'm talking about, yeah, Northside, you would bring into play Northside, Northeast Elementary, Bath, so you'd bring in all of those. How you would get to that point with all of the parents that would be involved to agree to that might be a long discussion, but it would be one that can be had, no doubt about that, no doubt that you can have it. In the past, when we have floated this idea around, typically, there was no support for that. There was zero support from the community, so until we can decide on how to sell that plan to the community, if it can even be done, there's no, it doesn't matter what we decide, because I guess what I'm saying is, we can draw a line, but if they don't go, they don't go.
You're saying it's a political issue?
I'm not saying it's a political issue. I'm saying people buy homes in one area to go to school there, and when we move their kids to another area, they don't want to sell their house and move to another area. I'm just repeating what's been told to me.
Virtually every county in North Carolina redistricts in order to balance the independence of the schools. It's not fair to ask the taxpayers to spend millions and millions of dollars to build a school, and then to say that you guaranteed somebody a school. I don't think that that's the way it works.
Yeah, and I don't think that's what, I don't actually think we've actually said that we guarantee anybody a school, but I hear what you're saying. I didn't say guarantee. I said people don't want to change where they're living at and sell their house and move to another area because we moved their kids. That's not saying that I said we guarantee them anything. I haven't said that.
Well, that's why we elect a school board to balance these things. As a commissioner, I expect school board to do the most economical thing for the taxpayers of the county, and if that's redistricting in order to get the schools properly balanced. See, I happen to know there are 2,000 vacant seats in the schools in Belkirk County. There's 9,000 and something seats available in the schools in Belkirk County that meets all the standards. You've got about 7,000 students. So why should we keep spending the taxpayers' money to force kids into crowded schools when we can spread them out and save that capital?
We may have, we may have open spaces in high schools, but you've also got to look at the feeder schools, the elementary and middle schools. I mean, if you redistrict between Bath, between Washington and Northside-
Bath doesn't have the space.
Bath don't have the room to put the kids. Northside may have the room, same way at Southside. Southside may have the room at the high school, but Chacoentie Primary and Chacoentie Middle don't have the room. So then we'll be building buildings there to accommodate new elementary and middle school students there. So this is, I mean, we're just talking about full classroom. We're talking about what we want to do is get rid of modular buildings that have been there for 25 years, that people are falling into the floor of. That is what we're wanting to do, and we're just adding four additional classrooms to the eight that are overflowing right now.
Well, you know, the fact that those units are completely worn out and need to be replaced, we're back to the nub of the issue that we've been talking about, and that is, do we spend the capital on this, or do we redistrict in order to get the balance within the school system? Keep in mind, you've got 2,000 empty seats in a 7,000-student school system. So this gets to be an easy thing to do when it comes to the taxpayers' money.
But it's also to tax pay those children getting quality education and having a decent place to go.
You're saying some of these schools are substandard, and children should not be in them?
No, I'm not saying that. Are you saying to put a pre-K on a bus to ride from Bath to where?
What I'm saying is it's up to the school board to balance these things to meet the standards.
And what I'm saying is that we don't only be concerned with the monies, we have to be concerned with the students getting to school, staying in school, and the parents. So it is a conversation we need, and it may not be now, but you need to be open for our concerns also.
Well, before we spend all of this money on these units, this capital, right now's the time to solve this problem, because you build those new units, and you've wasted money even if you redistrict. So what you're saying is, give us the money for the units. We're not going to redistrict, is what I'm hearing from the board. And it's up to the taxpayers as to how much of that they want to pay for. And I have a request on the units that are being replaced. I would like to visit those units.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Another school board member, I recommend when you start to talk to shipping children all the way across this county, if you have your meeting at one of the high schools or the community colleges or something, because this place won't hold it. And the thing that you're talking about, those five units, is even if you started redistricting today, the possibilities of having losses because of redistricting, those modules will be fell down, and somebody will be hurt, you know, before you can ever sell this thing about redistricting these kids.
But I want to say one thing. Talking about hauling children across county is a red herring. We all know that what we're doing is shifting lines. We're not going to be transporting children across the county. That's a red herring to inflame the public. What we're talking about is adjusting lines, school district lines.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to what Bush was talking about, just so I can understand better. You're saying, Bush, that if we redistrict, then places like Chacoentie Middle School will not have the capacity to take the redistrict? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. That's my feeling.
And just about every other middle school will be in the same situation. Our high schools are where the crowding problems are.
No.
Well, Washington High School is a crowding problem.
Yes, Washington is, yes. For instance-
The Northside and Southside, they're the ones that have the classrooms.
Right. For instance, what I think Bush was saying, let me just see if I can kind of summarize this. Let's look south of the river. No one's disputing the fact that there's probably some additional seats at Southside High School, but if you redraw a line to wherever it would need to be, and I, I mean, we can have this conversation, nobody's saying we can't have a conversation, is, but when you move those kids to Southside High School, you're going to be moving kids as well in those families to other schools. And we already have Chacoentie Primary on that side of the river closed for transfers because of capacity issues already. Matter of fact, if you look on the capital, you'll see it's in our second year plan to try to do something with the modular units there, because we also have two issues at that school in that side of the county. Years back, we had a fire, and we moved fifth grade off the campus. Fifth grade actually belongs in a K-5 setting, not in a middle school setting. We currently are housing those at another place. So it's, as I said, when you discuss this, it's a lot more involved than just moving high school students. We would have others as well. Now, if you want to go into the next school and say, well, you have your additional seats at SW Snowden in Aurora, certainly, I have had this conversation in the board, we've discussed this, and we've had conversations with people. You will not, I do not believe, you will get parents to agree to move kids from Washington to Aurora, and you wouldn't want to even probably look at that, I don't think. I don't think anybody's even suggesting that. But I do hear what he's saying about looking at the lines, and we can, and we haven't found anyone favorable to that idea.
I wonder what I'm driving at, I guess, at the bottom of the line will be, if Chacoentie Middle School is crowded right now, is that correct?
Yes.
Then as they move out, they're going to be in Southside High School, so that will decrease the amount of seats that we have open for Southside.
And population tends to, and it tends to fluctuate, yes.
But that's still not going to relieve the crowding problem at Washington High School. Over the long term, it'll all be a big problem.
I think the, one of the concerns that a lot of parents would have would be if we kept them, and I'm going to just refer to the Washington students, because Washington High School is the most crowded, but if we kept them at Eastern and Taylor and John Small, and then at PS Jones, or by the time they need to go to high school, we're going to ship them out, I think that's unfair. So what we would do if we redraw that district line, it's not just for high school, it would be also for your five-year-olds and your 10-year-olds. They would also need to go there to have the continuity of being with the same kids throughout their education. So that's where we hit a snag. It's not just by the time you get to the ninth grade, we're going to send you to another high school instead of Washington. It's any family within that line, no matter what age your child is, they're going to go out of their district to go to school. So that's, that really is the issue we're faced with. And those elementary schools, other than Snowden, which is a great school, but it's the furthest away, so, you know, you're talking, you want to put a five-year-old on a bus for 80 minutes in the morning, one way, you know, just to get to kindergarten at Snowden? But we have talked about it, obviously, and we'll continue talking about it. It's not something we're ignoring, but that's also not something you're going to jump right in and do and be done with it. I think it's going to take conversation between us and the commissioners, because it's going to take an entire village to sell that.
Well, I can agree with what Commissioner Richardson is saying about the dollars versus redistricting, but when you start dealing with parents all over the county that don't want redistricting, I think that's a voice of a malaport.
Well, let me just add one. Yes, sir.
I'm looking at four members from the Washington attendance area, one, two, three, four, that will not get reelected if you do this. And what will happen, if you start re-moving high school children around this county, what will happen is those people will leave this board, and you people will come on this board and reverse that decision. And it's that simple. Parents, parents are not going to let their children be shifted from Washington High School to Southside High School, and from Washington High School to Northside High School without filling the ballot box when the reelection comes. And you can say it's not political, or you want to, but it is political. It's just as political as it can be.
Well, I'll take the first-
If you start redoing district lines in this county and start overturning things that have been in place since I got here 50 years ago, and they were in place before I got here, you just, it's going to be really, really difficult politically to do. It's just not, I just don't think your school board will turn over and they will reverse whatever decision a school board made.
I agree with Commissioner Belcher, and would also add that I'm the parent of three children in three different Washington schools, and when they go through four schools and end up graduating from PS Jones, and your, and the board is going to tell me that those kids are then going to have to leave all of their friends. The social aspect of school is as just important as the cerebral education, getting the knowledge part of school, in my mind. That's a big part of it. And if they go and have to learn a new set of kids and anxieties and all that kind of stuff, I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair for us to ask people that are in a five-mile area to be able to change that. So I'm looking at it from not only a board perspective, but also a parental perspective. And I'll add this, and I think, Fisher Booth, you were with us at Washington High School with these modular units, and you can, that was a year ago.
They won't last five more years.
They're not, they're not good. They're not good. And I know we have two debates. Do we, do we talk about redistricting, or do we say, let's put the money into making our schools safe?
Let me clear the air on something, just to be sure. I'm not talking about transferring, as some people in here have alluded to, there's a lot of inflammatory statements have been made in here of transferring students from Washington to Aurora. That is not what we're talking about, just for the record. We're talking about adjusting school lines. We are not talking about some of the things that I've heard from the school board here, which are entirely to inflame the public. The question is, how much tax money is the public willing to pay in order to keep the situation as it is today, when you have 2,000 empty seats in the county, and there's plenty of opportunity to adjust school lines so that we do not have to spend this capital and continue to do this? Every school system that I know of in the state of North Carolina adjusts the districts. The law on adjusting the districts is very clear, because parents have sued and sued and sued and sued, and that law is very clear as to what the powers of the school board are to do this. The question for these commissioners are, how long are you going to keep abusing the public with overtaxation in order to satisfy a few people whose children are going to a certain school that are only going to be there four or five years, and then the whole problem goes away? You know, are you going to do your job to keep these taxes down, or are you going to keep paying?
Can I ask a question? You said you started a discussion about redrawing-
I said, we've had a discussion among ourselves.
So actually, there's really not been any work of itself done? But my question was going to be, what would it look like versus the amount of money we're talking about right now? I was just trying to get a comparison after the question.
You mean, what would be the cost of redistricting versus replacing a modular? Now, I don't have that feature, but you would have to have a lot of discussion brought into it, because it's something that we haven't even talked about. It also comes into transportation, because whether you think we're just moving them from one school to another or not, that's not entirely true, because we have transportation models by the state and efficiency ratings that we have to meet. And every time we lose an efficiency rating, it costs us literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in funds. So it's not a zero cost on one side versus a cost on the other side. And so what you're asking is an excellent question to weigh the differences out. I still will echo what other board members have already said. Money is always on everybody's mind. Money is always a concern. But I can assure you, as also the parent of kids that went to school here, and as a grandparent of kids that are currently going here, money, when you have these, if you were to carry it far enough to where you were to have meetings and meet with parents, money is not even going to be in the discussion. That's not going to be the problem that you're going to be facing at all. But I hear what you're saying, and while our board has discussed this, and we do not feel, and if anyone on the board thinks this is an incorrect statement, please correct me for the record, if this board does not feel that redistricting is in our best interest. But, and I know you don't per se have, you know, will do this to us, but if I'm hearing from your board that you are directing us to look at redistricting the schools, I will- I will carry that conversation back to my board. But we do not feel that redistricting is in the best interest of the children in this county.
And my bottom line is this, I prefer to make an informed decision instead of just a decision.
An emotional decision, and that was a good question. Yeah, that was a good question because I think you realize there's a lot of pieces that fits into it that may drive the cost up. But we can definitely. Hearing what both of you gentlemen have said, I think that it would be in the interest of this board to not fund those modular units, but to fund a study to see what it would look like. Because as the chairman has said, an informed decision is a lot better than any other decision. And until that study's done, nobody really knows.
But the unique geographic layout of this county with a river splitting the county right wide open makes redistricting difficult. And plus, the bulk of our county population surrounds the city of Washington. Our schools that have the vacant seats are on the far south end of the county and on the far north end of the county, away from Washington. A long ways from Washington. Right now, we've got students on Slankstone Road that are five miles from Washington High School that have been busing Northside. We've got students on the Southside River that are just a few, five, six miles from Washington High School that are being bussed to Southside. How much closer are you going to get? I mean, you're going to end up getting to nothing but the city of Washington, going to Washington High School and then bussing everybody else 20 miles, 25 miles away, putting on a bus 45, 50 minutes a day, one way, if you get into redistricting.
Guys, I can't help but to throw this dart at you, so please don't take it too badly. You're the guys that decided where the schools were built, not us. And not necessarily these guys here.
And Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, we have an entirely different board.
When those schools were built, there was a feasibility study on the projected population, helped the population.
There was a bogus feasibility study. Everything that Jeff Boss done is subject to.
Hey, I'm not calling it anything.
To the nth degree.
But it was done. We did exactly what the law said we had to do before that school was built, Mr. Chairman. So I can't help it, the population, nobody else can.
Bottom line right now is, we're not going to solve this right now.
That's right, this is a discussion for.
We've had this discussion.
You're right.
And it's something that your board will continue to discuss and outlaw. We can definitely.
That's exactly.
We can commit to gathering information.
I need to have one more question.
Sure, Commissioner Brennan.
On the replacement modules, are you going back with the same type of module that you have now? Or are you going to have more like what they built out of Eastern Elementary, something like that?
It will be a metal building like you see at John Cotton Taylor.
It will be a prominent structure, right.
And Commissioner Brennan's been in the one at Eastern. It's very nice, isn't it inside? It's a metal building, but when you walk inside it, you don't know the difference.
You're exactly right.
Chairman Langley is correct, we're not going to solve it today, but we will definitely commit to gathering information. But we're here today simply to lay out what we believe our needs are. And of course, it's up to you to decide that, we don't get into making your decisions for you.
Chairman Langley, is there a timeline you'd like for us to, as far as looking at something like that, at least having a study that's in the pipeline? Something we can discuss later?
And I'm thinking realistically, I don't think you can do it this year. That's not, it's just too close. So the decisions that we have to make, we have to make for this year. But my suggestion is that in the near future, the study should be done. But as far as this budget cycle, it'll never happen.
We're not going to build one of those buildings in this year's budget anyway.
Do the study and have it ready for next year. Do the study and have it for us next year.
Talking about 1.9, what is 1.?
1.8 million.
About 1.9 on just logic.
1.958. No, that's 1.305. So that's, that's not my, I mean, out of this budget.
So I'll wrap up the Capitol to pull that together and get the information on who does that type of study and what kind of cost. Any other Capitol questions?
I just want, in your system-wide technology piece, any anticipation on, you know, the governor's coming out with some infrastructure, technology infrastructure proposals, what do you know what that looks like? Any crossover with your?
There may be a lot of that we did with the federal auto money a few years ago. We did a lot of wireless conversions and pieces of technology like that. So we're in a good place as far as that money goes, but we don't know the details yet and whether it's going to impact every school and every school district or not. But that's probably half of where we really need to be on the technology side. So there'll be ample opportunities to be able to spend those funds in the system-wide technology piece. Okay. So we move forward to local current expense, local appropriation. And I've got that on, Lisa's going to pass out some information. Put together just a few PowerPoint slides to help frame my thoughts and talking points for me, but also for you to see the numbers to get an idea of where we are. We have talked for the last few years within the board as we've put our budgets together of where we've been with regards to personnel. And before I say anything else with regard to local appropriation, I want to say thank you to the county commissioners. Thank you for your generosity, thank you for the level of support that you provided to us because you have certainly allowed us to maintain some positions that across the state, other school districts have not been able to maintain. We've also been able to use fund balance to take care of that. This year, as you'll see in just in a moment, we've appropriated a million dollars of fund balance in the current year that allowed us to be able to keep some positions onboard. We can't continue to do that and we can't continue to spend fund balance that eventually gets to zero and then you've got a very tough decision to make. And we're at that point this year where there's some significant cuts in the budget that we're going to share with you. But want to paint the picture for you, if you follow along what we've got on the screen here. The current year of 1516, the budget, our total local operating budget is 14,658,275. And when you take a look at that, that money, that total is derived from a combination of sources. The local appropriation from our commissioners for 1516 is 13.233 million dollars. And then you add to that fines and forfeitures, you add interest, and we appropriated a little bit over a million dollars of fund balance to get us to that total number where we are. A couple of things happen each year in terms of. And you've got that, you've got the PowerPoint?
You ready for that?
Yeah, I'll send that to you. I've got a copy of the PowerPoint and it's only about eight slides, so there's not a lot there, but you'll have a chance to see that. But things happen each year. And this year, one of the things that we were dealing with right out of the gate when we start talking about budget was what was going to happen with regards to a pay raise for teachers or for state employees across the border or however that works out. And we never know exactly what that's going to be until the budget's passed. We know, we have a better idea right now where the governor's ideas are, but we don't know about the Senate and the House for sure. So we try to gather as much information as we can so that when we put numbers together, those numbers are realistic and make sense. So the two things that we're looking at in our local budget this year, the first and foremost, which is over 800,000, is a salary and benefit increase. As you all know, that increase is given to the state employees, we try to pass that on to our locally paid employees. Federal programs pays more out of their grants, which means that they may have fewer people that they can employ, but we don't pick up the additional cost for that. But then you've got folks that are in different areas that are being paid from different sources. And then the local teacher supplement increase of $100, again, we're asked to include that. So those are the two specific increases, but they're significant because of dollar amounts that are associated with them. When we get into cuts in what we're battling in terms of money that we have to spend, you've heard me talk about low health, but I don't know if I've shown you what that graph looks like. There are a couple of other cuts that we're going to get into on the next slide. One of those deals with ADM, our average daily membership. And the state's projecting that our student enrollment numbers next year are going to decline by 87, which, when you put the dollar figures of everything associated with that, it's about $517,000 less. That's due to decreased enrollment. Low wealth is not related to decreased enrollment. There's a political side to this, like there is to just about anything that we talk about. But if you take a look at where we were back in 2006, '07 and take a look at where we are in 1516, we've dropped over a million dollars. And that was a funding source where we had people there. And in some cases, those individuals have been pushed over on the local side. And the point that I want to make is that we can't continue to pay out of local money what we've not been able to pay out of state money. And we just can't, we can't push that responsibility on the commissioners and we don't have fund balance to do that forever either. And that's why we're in the situation where we are now. If you take a look at the other cuts and reduction, low wealth, I showed you, I think we're down projected as about $17,000, is that right, Lynn? From what we can tell for next year, not a significant cut, but it's big when you look over the last 10 years. The ADM reduction, which I just mentioned to you, is a state reduction. That impacts state-funded personnel that we wind up having to reduce. Otherwise, we push that to the locals and the local appropriation has to pick up the tab for that too, which is something that we can't continue to do. Locally funded positions, one of the key positions here are teacher assistants that you've heard us talk about with the state funding that's been decreased for teacher assistants. And we've held on to a good number of those positions, but again, that's been done on the local side. For us, what we're looking at in this budget are position cuts, and this is not always individuals that don't have jobs. We try to go in and do as much of this in attrition as we can, we try to move folks around into open positions. But this year, we will very likely have some individuals that may not be employed anymore. But we certainly will place as many as we could. 15 teacher assistants, 13 instructional personnel, which will be teachers, and four district positions at central services for a total of 32 positions. That will be moving into the 1617 budget that we have, and we'll show you what that dollar figure looks like. What does that equate to? For us, we've had 90 positions that have been cut since 2009. If you do the 32 on top of that, it gets us to 122 positions that have been cut. And again, up until this year, we've been able to deal with that through attrition and be able to place individuals in positions. And then we also are proposing a locally funded non-personnel cut. We try to take a look at our local budget that didn't involve people because we know that we're dealing with the cut and then we've also got the benefit and salary increases there. But we tried to make sure that we grabbed as much as we could in terms of tightening the belt on everything that was non-personnel on the local side that we could. And all of those go together to take a look at what we've got. So our proposed budget for the upcoming year will be 14,567,018. How does that compare to where we currently are right now? The current budget for 1516 is 14,658,275. So there's actually a reduction in our operating budget of 91,275. And I think if we left it there and walked out of the room, we feel like we've reduced our overall operating budget and, you know, we have sustained significant cuts, but we feel like we've done quite a bit of work. The issue for us is fund balance allocation. And that may trigger another conversation that we need to have. But I wanted to show you what the budget request would look like here. If you take a look at the 1516 adopted budget, and this is just putting the numbers behind what was on the previous slides, the salary and benefit increase and the local supplement increase are additions that we're looking at. And then we've got the reduction of locally funded personnel and the reduction of the locally funded non-personnel cost. And that yields a net reduction of a little bit over $91,000 and yields that bottom figure, which is a slightly reduced number for our operating budget. What our proposal includes is that we have that 14.567 million dollar budget request and then take out of that $266,000 for fines and forfeitures, which is lower than what we have in the current year because we're not collecting as many fines and forfeitures. So that projection has been reduced, which would lead a local appropriation of 14.3 million dollars, which is actually an increase of 1,67,000, which is about 8% increase from where we were. But that would be the request in terms of the request made by the school board through the county commissioners. And I know there are probably lots of questions and we went through that quickly, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity to have the floor and ask questions.
Questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I got one. About the teacher's assistance. When this subject came up last year and the commissioners agreed to supplement the teacher's assistance, keep their job, we said at that time that we were giving them a year to relocate or find new positions somewhere. Did you take that into account when you cut these assistants out?
We have, we've been sharing that message for about three years. We have a letter that goes out, we've got folks that are on expiring contracts, those will be the individuals that we'd be looking at. Again, we would hope that we'd be able to place existing employees in other positions and in the number that we're looking at. Even though positions will be cut, the people that will be out of a job would be as minimal as we can possibly make it. But I can't honestly say today that we'd be able to find a landing spot for every single employee. But we've gone back and shared that message and said, we don't know what's going to happen. And this is not an ongoing thing. If you all were to get together and say, we want to appropriate extra money to allow those folks to be there, it becomes an annual requirement that you're going to have and it's an expensive requirement. And we realize that cuts need to be made. I mean, we're talking about pushing down to you guys the things that have been done at the state level and it's just a responsibility that you can't bear.
So when these teachers' assistants lose their jobs, they should not be surprised?
Should not be surprised.
That's what I want to know.
Won't be pleasant by any stretch.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
In terms of communication and understanding, after we meet today, I'm going to meet with all the teacher assistants. I'm trying to work out something next week just to let them know what our budget requests are and the fact that if this is approved, we're looking at significant 32 cuts, as you saw, that touch every aspect of the school system.
How many of those are TAs docked that you have that's eligible for retirement? Do you have any?
We have five retirements at this point.
There may be more than that that come in.
Do you count that in your 32?
Yes, sir.
So that's a good, they already counted in the reduction, the five that's going to retire?
Yes, sir.
That's above this number.
That, I'm sorry, that's right, that's above that. That's above, I apologize.
No, I mean, I thought I knew where he was.
Yeah, that's above.
Let me follow you, all your low-hanging fruit.
Unless more people choose to retire in the next month or so, yes, sir.
You know how many county-paid classroom personnel you have at the present time? And how many county-paid classroom personnel you will have under the new, next year?
We can pull that number for you. We've been looking at classifications of teacher assistants or instructional support, we can pull that for you. I don't know that we've got it right.
Yeah, that's fine, just, you got to send it over when you get it.
I think, Mark, can you tell what the local reduction, I think we have that on a sheet? The state, when the state reduction, nine and a half positions?
Eight, eight and a half.
Eight and a half teaching positions. So that will be four and a half, that'll be, from the local side, it'll be four and a half teachers less than what we have. It will be 14 teacher assistants less than what we have.
Right.
And then the district-level positions, I don't know if all four of those are fully funded. Some positions are funded, some out of state and some out of local, but those are four district-level positions.
But you'll still give us the total number of personnel that are paid on the county.
We will. And that may change a little bit throughout the year, so really it's the snapshot of when you pull that report, but we can do that.
About eight and a half teachers cut from the state was that because of?
ADM reduction, yeah.
You're only losing 87 students though, they're overdoing it, aren't they?
Some of this is catching up with what we've been doing too, where we've covered some state on the local side. We've got to get that corrected because we can't continue to come in with the kind of requests that we've had today.
Well, when somebody leaves and goes, just to the, it's a place over in Jamesburg. You lose them off of your ticket?
We have to pay our local, the local appropriation for them goes to Nurse's Way. So we lose that state amount of money.
Students that go into early college, do you lose them off of your ticket?
They're still considered our students.
Still considered your, is that enrollment increasing out there? I know we were having trouble getting up to 150 students.
We're pushing near 300.
Oh, out there?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
And has been the highest performing school, high school, middle school, elementary school in northeastern North Carolina. They've done very well, but they, I think they were trying to target 50 students per grade level and they've been able to go up to 60, but the max number in terms of facilities and whatnot is going to be 300. And we've got a long waiting list.
Any other questions?
Got a question, Jerry. On the last page, you've got salary and benefit increase, 843,000. Is that based on the 5% that the governor's talking about or is that a higher percentage?
What we've done is a 5% for teachers and 3% for non-certified. We've also heard that you may want to bank on 4%. When we ran the 4% numbers, they came out very similar to that. So it's 5% teachers, 3% non-certified.
So that number would go down if?
Could, could go up, but could go down a little bit. But from what we've heard from folks in Raleigh, politicians and folks in education, that was the number for us to use for planning. And that brings up a really great point. It's difficult to build a budget when you don't know for sure what you've got coming in. And you try, you know, I don't ever want to give you all the impression that we're padding or that we're coming in high knowing that we're going to hit it low. I would rather be transparent and then come back afterwards and say, this is what's happened in Raleigh and we need to readdress and look at that. But we've talked to lots of folks that are involved in school finance and several folks that are involved in the General Assembly to get an idea of what that number may look like and this is what the planning number is.
And that's an excellent question also, Commissioner Morris. I was going to bring that up just before we close because they started out with 10%. They went through a number.
They've been through a numbers, percentages all the way from ten percent down, which I don't think any of us believes that's probably what's going to happen, but you can see, but you can see uncertainty for us. Ten percent would drive that number through the roof, and we're just not sure what's going to happen.
Well, the governor's not going to get reelected, so that's really what's going on with this ballot.
Well, you know, we've actually commented several times, but it's an election year, so you don't ever know. But that's the whole problem. We don't know. But that number is probably very close, and it wouldn't surprise me if it didn't go up just a little bit.
I wanted to make a, just a quick comment about the teacher assistants. About the teacher assistants. And they, they are, many of them, most of them are year-to-year contracts, so they, they are aware of every year that this is a possibility, and here lately, it's been more of a probability. So they understand that. But what we also have to understand is that most of these teacher assistants are not fresh out of high school. They're not fresh out of, of community college or university. Most of the assistants in our county are older women, a few men, but, and they've been doing this for a long time. This is not a new job to them. Most of the assistants are in their thirties, forties, fifties, some even in their sixties. So even though they know it's a year-to-year thing, we are in a climate, and not just in our county, but in our country, where if you work really, really hard and you go to work every day and you do all the right things, you may still lose your job. And, and I think that's, that's a sad statement to think because many of these assistants that, that might lose their job have been absolutely devoted to both county schools for many years.
And I want to say.
And there's not another place for them to go.
How many of them are bus drivers?
Pardon me?
I mean, I've got bus drivers.
Not really sure right now, but it wouldn't surprise me that it'd be a number of them. You have any ideas exactly?
The majority, the majority would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're all certainly required to have a bus license, but doesn't mean they're all full-time bus drivers in addition to ETAs.
And I want to say, too, the value of a teacher assistant i- is much greater than the salary, and, and the salary is what we're dealing with in terms of overall numbers. And the only way to know that is to get in the schools and see the kinds of things that they're doing. And I think the days of having somebody that runs copies and puts up bulletin boards and does that type thing, the teacher assistants are in the classroom. They're the right arm of the teacher. They're doing a lot of the, the breakout group work with our students, particularly with the focus on literacy that the state has on K-three. We need every, every single one of them in the classroom, and it's, it's just difficult. So when you lose them, you're not losing a non-integral part of the school district. You're losing somebody who's very important.
Can I add just one thing? I don't want to drag this out, but back under, they don't have to turn, they don't know where it's at. On page three, where it says cuts and reductions, I, I can appreciate the way the presentation was put together, and you did mention it, but thirteen instructional personnel. Okay. Scratch through that and put thirteen teachers. That's teachers.
Thirteen what?
That's teachers. Instructional personnel is a real fancy name for teachers. Even though we may have people that retire and we may have people that choose to leave for whatever reasons, and we transfer people from one place to another, that will still will be thirteen teachers less and can affect, now, I've talked to people at the high school level already about some of this, and it can affect, will affect possible class offerings. There can be classes that we might currently offer as an elective that we will not be able to, and so you also run the danger of having parents not getting for their children what they might be wanting to get if it doesn't become available to us online, which if we run it to an online, still, there's a cost of that, too. But the real world side is that, is that they actually end up, you lose kids due to not having what they're looking for. Then when they transfer out, if that were to be the case, that money's gone, too. So you begin to get in this catch-twenty-two spiral, and it just keeps building upon itself and building upon itself. But I just wanted to make sure that instructional personnel means teachers, people that are teaching our kids today.
And what we have to do is go back and, and look at our allocation formula of how we allocate teachers, and a lot of that's based on student numbers. There's some guidelines that we have for early grade levels from the state, but then when you get into high school, you know, foreign languages or, or high-level sciences or math, things like that, it may be where we have to start doing more virtual, and we, we have the ability to broadcast, have a teacher at one of our schools to broadcast to the other, too, and I think we have to get into more of that to utilize and be as efficient as we can with both the people and the equipment that we have.
But as one high school principal mentioned to me, find a student that will be successful taking advanced calculus online without a teacher in front of them.
Yeah. That's not going to happen.
That's right. It's not going, wouldn't for me, anyway, Commissioner.
It wouldn't for me with a teacher in front of me.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I probably wouldn't make it with two teachers in the room. But anyway, there's something to think about.
Well, I'm not, Doc, if you get in your presentation and you say, "Thanks to the commissioners," and I'm not, this is not political. This is A. I'm not up for reelection. You and your board have done an outstanding job handling the resources that we have given you, and this is a team effort, and we want to thank you for your leadership and your openness that you have done with us.
Thank you.
And, and if you will listen to our meetings from time to time, I know you've got better things to do than this, but our meetings, we seriously, several times, we, we comment, "Thank you for what you've done for us." You've really stepped up to the plate over, over, over. I, if I have an issue, and I'm not going to say I do on camera, but if I have an issue, it's not with the county.
Anything else on commissioners?
Yeah, one thing that's happened with the cuts of this, they weren't actual cuts of the state, they gave more money, but the increase in the number of students meant that you had less money per pupil. The state has given more money, but it's just that, I haven't given enough, and the answer to that from my perspective, I have this note, they have not given, I forgot your, the per pupil expenditure has gone down. In, in Beaufort County, the, the enrollment has remained static or gone down, and yet we have been giving more money. And I, I just want you to know that we're probably to the point now where we're in the top thirty in the state in per pupil expenditure on public schools from county dollars. And it, and it has been, from my perspective, a goal of ours to stay in the twenty-five, you know, be in the top twenty-five of the state is really good, but that, with, with the changes recently, we have, we have moved up from probably middle thirties, uh, probably, I would say, guess, around thirty, would you, Jerry? About, uh, thirtieth in the state. And for Tier One County, in eastern North Carolina, that's, that's pretty good.
I was going to tell you, if, if you want to know, the last time I checked from a year ago, you actually ranked twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Which is, that's why I just said, I have no issue with the county. I mean, it's all, but also at the state level, they, yeah. At, at the state last year, they, this year, they reported thirty-nine thousand additional students. So, yeah, you can get a larger pot, but you've got more people to divide that pot up in, so.
And the course offerings are growing. The demand for course offerings are growing at, all across the state, you know, the, the big concentration, not just on schools like Nurse, but which is doing great, but the students are, are demanding and needing these courses to be competitive to get into universities. Just our state universities have raised the bar. So what you could do at, at any high school in Beaufort County ten years ago and to get into one of the state universities that even come close now, there are kids that are A-students that are scoring high on the SAT and the ACT who can't get into NC State and, and Carolina because they've raised the bar. And, and so I, I feel like it's, it's our duty to continue raising the bar at the high school level, at all the high schools, not just early college, which is doing a great job, but all the high schools. We have to keep raising the bar on what we can offer, and it's going to go to a lot of the online courses, but I don't, I don't ever want us to be satisfied that we're doing enough, because when one student who's done well through school and scored on the state-mandated test what they need to score, and they're still being passed over, then we haven't done enough.
Right. Do we have? Excuse me, go ahead.
In, in the budget process that we'll be in for the next several weeks, I'd like to see the maintenance budget total dollars and the capital expenditure total dollars compared with last year and the previous year. So two years' history and then the proposed. I mean, as a commissioner and a fiduciary responsibility, I'm always concerned about is we add additional operating expenses that's continuous every year, but I know that a lot of times we play around with, with, in the budget process with the maintenance budget as well as the capital expenditure.
Commissioner.
I don't know if we have any reason to, but do we have any numbers on the numbers of students that graduate from Beaufort County High School that require remedial instruction at the higher level that they're going to?
We, we know from the community college level, and Dr. Tanji said that number has gone down significantly from, I don't know what timeframe has been, but fewer students that are going to the community college require remediation to go into the beginning-level classes. I can, I'm sure, I know they've got the statistic because she shared that information with me. I'll, I'll get that for you, share, share the numbers.
That would be great if you would, yes. Maybe over a period of years?
And I'm not sure what kind of data they track, but I'll, I'll see what they've got and share that with me.
Anything for commissioners? We entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion there, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. You're on your hands.
Thank you very much. We don't hate items just long enough. We've got one item to cover for some, what is it, Dan? As a chairman, I'm going to tell you, you want to have your committee, you want to have your committee, not bring in a redistricting. Matter of fact, he doesn't want to have to stay for this meeting, Jerry, and does he have to stay for this, this year? Our fault? Oh, I mean, does he just need camera running, or does he need to stop? Okay. Since we start with this gentleman, that's fine.
Stan can share with you the details.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's the only item I show is what Stan has, since she appears out, he can tell us what it is. Which I don't really enjoy to hear right damn so. No. Okay, Stan, we're moving to our first and only action item, and you can explain to us what it is.
This is a change order request for east rental entry. This was a request by the fire marshal that was not given to the architects prior to the building being put out for bids. The email got lost or did not get transferred to our architect. We got a meeting with the city, and we, we kind of, y'all know about that previously, about the change order for the fire lane to be added, and this is part of that change order, and we agreed to break the fire lane, I mean, the fire lane road out of it, and I'll be presenting that to you when we go through it. But this change order is for fire department connection, change order by fire marshal in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy. And in this change order, they put a, he does, back, it took us a credit for us for change in our code base that was put in the building from what originally was spec until something that was what we, what we currently use, the code base, so give us a credit of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. We are requesting and need a group one, a change order to cover the fire department connections in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and one hundred and seventy.
Okay.
That will bring.
How many fire department connections are we going to need? What are, what are we talking about here?
From the highway, two sixty-four, a fire lane over to the back of the building and the FDC to just run this building alone, this new building. The current system that was around would not put out the water flow that was needed to cover the facility, even though it's a fully sprinkled building, we couldn't get the GPMs that was required to run the pump. So with this new fire lane, they were setting it on the backside of the campus and be able to cover other buildings besides the new building. It's not just for this new building, it's to cover the backside of the campus to give us fire protection if needed.
So what, what is this twenty-some thousand dollars for?
Piping.
Piping from where to where?
From two sixty-four to the back of the building, to, to new proposed driveway.
Okay.
Back locomancers, post indicator valves, hydrants, labor.
Okay, so they're, they're tying into the water system, they're not just putting in the fire department connection?
Yes, sir. We have a whole main from two sixty-four all the way into the school.
So what was originally designed?
They were, they were designed for the sprinkled building to be sprinkled and use the current FDCs. Mark Yates in the general note to start with his note, and one of our local building officials did not pass that note to the architect, so it was noted prior to construction that we did not get, but it just didn't get passed and put into it. It would have been in the original construction, though.
Well, we did something with that one. Didn't we, Stan, with the lane or something?
We're going to bring that to you on the way forward, so I made you aware of what was going to be coming, and it was put out for bids. We'll bring that to you on the way forward.
Okay, that was the fire lane?
He just said he was going to bring.
Give them access to the backside, to the, to the campus. All of the campuses, we have access around.
We had the money?
We put it in the bids, and now we have the bids. I'm sorry, you have, you have available funds, yes.
How much contingency did we have in this project? We have a choice. We have to do it. I mean.
Do we have the funds from another source, or do we have the funds because we're under budget on that building?
It's, it's not in that, it's not in that budget. It has to be taken from.
Other source.
Funds that you've saved from other projects.
Out of the fund balance.
There are, there are no, that I'm aware of, there are no contingencies, specifically contingency funds built in the project.
Are there any other overages other than this one?
No, ma'am, we're close to being finished with that bid, yes, they're putting the.
So that's going to be it?
Explain, I mean, not, not, yeah, I was asking, explain the fire lane to me again. I thought that we had covered that in a previous meeting. We didn't actually ever take a, I thought we took a vote.
We took a vote to get bids, but we haven't approved a bid.
See, that's what you're talking about, bringing back.
I know, I heard it.
What is that kind of looking at like?
Twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
So we're looking at forty-four thousand then in all, twenty-four for the?
Forty-six.
Forty-eight, wasn't it, twenty-four and twenty-four?
Yeah.
Oh, he said twenty thousand, he said twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. Well, I wrote down twenty-two thousand, three seventy.
Well, we got a rebate, yeah.
I thought he said twenty thousand.
With the rebate.
It is twenty thousand.
So you're right, so you're looking at forty-four.
Seeing I didn't even take account of this.
You should have.
You should have. You might have done even better than that. Wasn't it four? I mean, if, if that's what it is, isn't there any looking back up? I, I was just, knew we were talking about it, but I didn't know if we, we hadn't approved a bid yet.
So I sent the bid eight thousand.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So what's the group? I want to say, what are you thinking, but I was going to say, we have a choice, but they can't open the building without it.
Move to approve.
Thank you for doing that. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion to a second. We will ask any other questions, but, okay, all in favor, say hi.
No, not with that.
You got a question?
Not with that.
Okay. Any party opposed, since we can't open the building without it? Okay, then I guess that's approved.
Going forward, not that we're going to be building anything else for a while, but we need to make sure this kind of stuff doesn't happen to us.
Well, the only way we can do it is we go to each person individually and say, "Do you have any of your comments?" Because if they got lost, then what?
Yeah.
I can say, "Your email got lost in what I called him," so it was...
Yeah.
No need to.
I would...I would think whatever the fire marshal requires, we need to...anything else we build, that needs to be first and foremost what we look at and make sure we check it all out.
Turn your water faucet on, see if you've got enough water for it.
Don, I have the question that I have is...
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the nine thousand vacant seats in our system?
Well, actually...
Two thousand. I mean, yes, yeah. Two thousand.
I can give you a breakdown of our capacity numbers based on the work that Jimmy Height